Evening, everyone. Welcome to the County Council meeting of Monday, January 23rd of 2023. It is 5:00. I call the meeting to order. Octavia, would you... Sarah, would you call the roll? But actually, if you take a look at us, there are 11 members of County Council. It's been a long time since we've had 11 members of County Council at the dais.
Over two years. I've never seen it.
Yeah. This is the first time in a long, long time that we've had our entire County Council here. So we are all in attendance to conduct the business of council. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And then please remain standing for the invocation that will be conducted by Councilwoman Brown.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage, to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we put the interests of others above our own. May we act with love for the common good. May we be good neighbors, recognizing your image in every person here. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I would ask a member of council to be offering the motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Dawson makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. This will be done without objection. And looking over council, I see no objection. The agenda is approved. Item number five is the approval of the minutes of December 12th of 2022. May I have a motion? You're going to make the motion? Oh, my goodness. Mr. McKellen makes the motion.
I've rescinded my vow of silence.
And Ms. Howard makes the second. Dooley motioned and seconded. Any concerns, questions? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved without objection. We're going to skip item number six and go directly to item number seven, which is a proclamation recognizing the Beaufort High School's state championship football team. And I believe, Ms. Howard, you are going to read that proclamation?
And I'd like the other two council members that have constituents at Beaufort High School to come forward too.
Absolutely. Mr. Bartholomew and Mr. Glover.
I was talking to a few of the players before the meeting, and my daughter graduated from Beaufort High School in 2001, and they won zero games that year. Congratulations, and let's go forward and read this. Whereas the last public school state championship title from Beaufort County was in 1945 by the Beaufort Title Wave. And whereas Beaufort High School moved to Class 3A this year because or of a realignment. And whereas the Beaufort High School Eagles football team won their last eight straight games during the regular season. And whereas Beaufort High School won the next three playoff games against Orangeburg, Wilkinson, Crestwood, and Gilbert High Schools. And whereas Beaufort High won the lower state championship by defeating Dillon High School. And whereas the Beaufort High School Eagles football team beat Powdersville High School to win the 3A state championship with a score of 41 to 31. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the County Council of Beaufort County that this council hereby wishes to recognize and congratulate the 2022 high school Eagles football team on their South Carolina State AAA championship title dated this 23rd day of January 2023, signed by Joseph F. Passamit, Junior Chairman of Beaufort County Council. And would someone like to come forward, speak for the team?
Sure. Where you want? Okay. Yeah, just want to thank everybody. This is a really amazing group of kids. And, you know, that's the cool thing is that you're recognizing what, you know, a group of 14, 18-year-olds did, and they did something that's never been done here. You know, did something that hasn't been done in 77 years, and it's a really big deal. So I appreciate y'all doing this and recognizing them. And we're just thankful, and we hope that we've, you know, represented Beaufort County the right way. Thank you. Appreciate it, guys.
Okay, our next item is our administrator's report. Tough act to follow, Mr. Greenway.
Yes, I know, yeah. It's always great to follow champions, so it's awesome. So I have one announcement tonight for the County Council and for the citizens of Beaufort County who might be watching either online or via our YouTube channel. This evening, I want to let you all know that we do have the applications online for the Greenspace Advisory Committee. They went live. That application was stood up on January 13th. The last date to apply is February 21st. The instructions are there on the Beaufort County website on the main page. If they scroll down, they'll see the Greenspace bar on the county main page. Each member that applies must possess experience in the areas of natural resources, land development, forestry, finance, land conservation, real estate, or law. They shall possess considerable experience with and a comprehensive knowledge of the geography and condition of Beaufort County's land, the natural environment, land development dynamics, and land preservation and development. Residency is required for the north, south, east, west position, but it is not required of the legislative delegation member or the person who is knowledgeable of the geography and condition of Beaufort County's land. So four of the positions require residency in Beaufort County. Two of the positions do not because some of our county delegation members do reside outside the county but represent areas inside the county. We do encourage current members of Beaufort County Boards and Commissions and agency members to apply as well. So that is ongoing right now. We'll be bringing that slate of names forward to you all to consider at some point after the deadline in February. As I customarily do, always like to recognize employees to tell you all a little bit about what they do and the job that they do for the county. Probably not in my career here, but eventually we'll get through all 1,400 employees. So that'll be a long time coming, and I don't plan to be working here then. But anyway, I'm gonna bring Natasha up from Parks and Rec. So one up here, young lady. I'm gonna talk a little bit... She doesn't know I'm getting ready to tell this story, but I moved here in January 2018. And she was one of the first people I met at Burton Wells Rec Center because I found out as a county employee, I could go to the recreation centers and workout and all. So she was the one that actually registered me and gave me my card for membership at Burton Wells, believe it or not. So, yeah. A few years ago. So this is Natasha Dort. She's an administrative clerk with our Parks and Recreation Department. She's been with us 17 years. She started in 2005 as a recreation aide and eventually became a part-time administrative clerk. Shannon convinced her to join the team as a full-time employee in June 2022 after over 20 years of service at Davis Elementary School. She is the smiling face you see when you walk into Burton Wells Recreation Center. I don't think I ever went in there when she was not smiling. So anyway, she seemed like she was always having a good day. And I know that's probably not always true, but she never showed if she was having a bad day. She helps with sports registration and gym memberships. Tasha receives many compliments and is a great listener. She has played adult softball for many years and is extremely good at sports. She has called Miss Showtime. Tasha is a huge fan of the Atlanta Falcons and cheers them on every weekend. You're like a lot of Atlanta fans. You had a lot of disappointment down through the years. I feel the same way right now, being a Dallas Cowboys fan. So I'm gonna let you say a few words, and we're gonna give you a round of applause, and then they're gonna take a picture of me, okay? So anyway.
Good evening. I just want to thank everyone in Beaufort County for allowing me to be a part of this team, especially Parks and Recreation, and my boss Shannon Loper, for giving me the opportunity to come. She's been asking me for years to become full-time at Park at Burton Wells, and I finally gave in. I look forward to coming to work every morning. And like Mr. Greenway say, I want to be that smiling face that everybody see when they walk through that door. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make a comment?
Sure.
Tasha just celebrated a birthday. I'm not gonna tell you what number.
Oh, really?
But it was a Atlanta Falcon birthday celebration at the same time.
That's awesome.
She just celebrated that a couple Sundays ago.
I can say it. I just turned 50.
I wasn't gonna say it.
See, Mr. Glover, I was gonna say, the whole smiling thing makes sense now. You gotta smile being a Falcons fan, because that struggle's real. 24 to 3.
Sarah, our next employee I'm introducing tonight could not be with us tonight. I do think we have a photo. Again, she's another one of the people that I was introduced to before I actually became an employee at Beaufort County. Her name is Clarissa Bickman. She... Bickham. She works in as an administrative specialist in our HR department. I came here and got my application from her to apply to be the Plan Director back in 2018. So she was actually the first person I ever met when I came to Beaufort County. She handles all parts of administrative roles for the HR office, including responding to inquiries from employees, department staff, and the public. She schedules and coordinates activities and events for the HR department. She maintains and updates the department website. She orders and maintains office supplies and distributes standard documents and correspondence. She is also responsible for the fiscal aspects of the department, purchase orders, processing invoices, submitting the necessary P-card reports. She's a great employee. She's a team person. She has a bright future. And is very likely to have a change in her responsibilities here in the next few weeks. So I will go ahead and state that, or at least I'm hoping for that. She enjoys crafting and is skilled in embroidery and screen printing. She has an eye for detail and an innate ability to see potential in the most mundane materials that allow her to turn them into excellent products. She also enjoys salsa. And I'm gonna mess this word up. Bacchada dancing in her free time. So anyway, let's give her a round of applause. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Our next item is a presentation of a short video from Christopher Morrell, GFOA Executive Director, congratulating Beaufort County Council on winning its first distinguished budget award. Pinky Harriet, Capital Projects Manager. Pinky.
Good afternoon. Thankfully, it may hang in there. I wanted to bring this, and there is a short video, I believe, broadcasting has. It is, as most of you know, Government Finance Officers Association presents annually a digital budget presentation award. And for fiscal year 2023's budget, we won our very first award for Beaufort County. So this plaque is for Beaufort County Council. And congratulations to the administration, and we are... Anybody ready for the video?
Greetings from the Government Finance Officers Association. I'm Chris Morrell, GFOA's Executive Director. It is my honor to recognize you for receiving the distinguished... The purpose of this award is to encourage and assist governments to prepare comprehensive and understandable budget documents that we believe will both improve transparency and trust in government. To earn the distinguished budget presentation award, you met demanding program criteria. Such a record reflects the professionalism, commitment, and dedication of your organization's leaders and finance team. We hope that this award will serve as an example and encourage others to strive for the same high standards in their own budget documents. Therefore, it is my privilege, on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association, to present to you this distinguished budget presentation award. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, we are at our first citizen comment section. It is a 15-minute session for members of the audience who wish to talk to us about items on the agenda. So Ms. Brock, would you announce those individuals?
No, Chairman, you have it.
Oh, do you want me to? I can do that. Mr. Donald Hamburger would like to talk to us about consent item number four on our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, members of council. As you said, my name's Donald Hamburger, and I'm speaking in reference to the proposed purchase of the property located at 2 Mullet Street. We had first reading on it last meeting. My wife and I own the property, which is directly adjacent to it. It's known on the tax rolls as 22 Mullet Street, but it's right next to this property. And we're preparing to build a house on it. We've been working on it for better part of a year. We currently live two doors down and across the street from this property. And that's the house that my father built in 1954, we believe. Somewhere right in there. Like many houses in this neighborhood, it was our summer house. And like many houses in this area, it's been converted to full-time, year-round use. So I've spent time in all joy my whole life. It's a special place. It's very unique, and it's got a character that I think's worth preserving. The boat ramp is part of the character of the neighborhood. And I want to state that I'm not opposed to expanding the parking lot of the boat ramp and acquiring the dock. However, we do feel strongly, like many of our neighbors, we feel strongly that the house, which is shown as Parcel B, should remain residential. It... If you look at the tax map, the Parcel B and the house sit back in the neighborhood. It's been there, part of that neighborhood, since the original subdivision of Mr. Lawton's farm back in 1922. It's part of the character of the neighborhood, and doing anything other than residential would significantly impact all of us back in that area, which is why there's a petition that's been going around asking council to keep this property residential. And when I say this property, I mean Parcel B, the house. We're not opposed to the Parcel A being used for the boat ramp and the dock. So we ask you to amend the resolution to keep the house as residential. At the last council meeting, it was presented that you would acquire both parcels, and then you would decide what to do with Parcel B. But you showed the drawing. You only showed the boat ramp being used on Parcel A. So we're asking for you to state your intentions that you would keep this house and this parcel residential. One final comment. You know, we often hear talk about preserving the quality of life that we have here in the Low Country. And here's an opportunity to do something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Skip Hoglin. You wish to talk about several items.
I've got several comments. I'll try to make them quick on all the agenda items. Number 13, I'm kind of a victim of that cutting, and I'm all for that ordinance. Don't get me wrong. I think we've got to save Beaufort County. I'm all for the, you know, cutting down on development and everything else. But I was a victim. My wife bought a lot in Page Point in Shelton, and this lot had grown up with pine trees over the last 20 years with an old fence around this one acre lot. And I assumed that that lot could be clear-cutted, and apparently the county disagreed with that. And so I was penalized and said that I could not do anything on that lot for two years. Instead of fighting that legally, I said, fine, I won't do anything for two years. I'll find something else to do with that lot with my wife. So we didn't fight that. But I think in that situation where maybe 20 or 30 years ago it was a pasture or a cow pasture with an old fence around it, maybe there should be somebody that should look at that. The second... Number 14, my comment there is very brief. We've never had a master land plan in all of Beaufort County, Hilton Head, Bluffton, Hardyville. We all know what's going on. There's gonna be much more conversations about overdevelopment, traffic, environmental destruction. This is stuff that's coming in a big way this year by just not me, but many people in this audience and many taxpayers. The number 15 is talking about bonds. I have a question. I want everybody to mark this down. I'd like to know how millions of hospitality taxes are used for bonds. This needs to be investigated. We already know the A-tax funds need to be investigated, but we need to know where these hospitality funds, and they're substantial amount of money. And from the best that I can tell, the use of A-tax funds as well as hospitality funds have basically just disappeared, and they're unaccounted for. So I think you all need to step up and be aware of that. Well, we all know about number 16 and the 2% accommodation tax fund. That's... I'll give more of a detail on that at the very end when I have my public comment. And I'll give everybody in the audience here great details in that if they patiently wait here and stay long enough. Mr. Passamit, since you are a part-time leader, and Mr. Greenway is basically in charge, can he account or can anybody account for the millions that have disappeared with no oversight, no accounting, no contracts, or even no tax recipient agreements at nonprofits that are issued our monies? They must sign agreements that spells out how they can legally use our tax funds and report these tax funds. We need to see receipts and invoices. All of you and your personal lives would not just hand money to somebody without any accounting. And then the next one is 17, and that's public money cannot be used for private purposes. Well, you gotta be careful. When you issue money for private purposes, it's not for the public good reason and benefit. And I just sued, or a group of us sued, the town of Hilton Head for issuing $2 million to sea ponds for the dredging of Harbor Town that should have been paid by the HOA. So I just get this out in 2023. Be careful who you issue monies to and how you do it legally, and make sure it's accounted for. And I'll follow up with you. My main speech coming up. Thank you very much.
Okay, there are no others talking about items on the agenda, so we will close the citizen comments. We will move to liaison and committee reports. Any member of council?
Did we approve the agenda?
Yeah, we did. We approved the agenda and the minutes.
Okay, I do have a report.
Yes.
So I did attend the school board meeting. It was a very lively meeting for over three hours, almost three and a half. Yeah, well, it was... There were a lot of people speaking, and the board determined they were ruling on the appeals from the Materials Reconsideration Committee reports. You've all seen the 96 books up on appeal. So they ruled on the first six, and their next meeting, they'll rule on the next six. They are also having a budget, their first budget... their first budget workshop coming up on the 27th. And if I can go on with the next one, I attended the county transportation committee meeting. And I, I already commented to Mr. Fralix, I got a great, great education on the 170 triangle update since we all have to go through there. And it was great. That's 170 Argent Boulevard and 278. It was really a very good presentation. I learned a lot. And they have things they've moved forward to the agenda.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Lawson?
Yes, from the Finance and Economic Development Committee, we have two things on the consent agenda. One is approval for stormwater required procurement of a Robex truck. And secondly, we also appointed and reappointed new members and former members back to the board. And there still are vacancies, obviously. So for anyone that needs to go online, they can go online and see what vacancies are still open for different committees available. And that's online. You can find that fairly simply by looking for committees.
Excellent.
Chairman, one meeting I went to is the airport board meeting. And they have a tour for the newbie elected officials here on February 1st, 2 o'clock at the Hilton Head Airport.
Excellent.
Okay?
Ms. Howard?
Yeah, yes, briefly, two of the items that are coming up for public hearings include the clear-cutting, tightening up that, and also a resolution to put a portion of the Okati Regional Preserve in the Old Growth Forest Network Program Registry, which is quite an accomplishment. And I did attend the finance meeting at Beaufort Memorial Hospital and will be attending their other meeting Wednesday morning, their general meeting. Beaufort Memorial Hospital is doing well and all three of the express cares have, their numbers are up. I don't know if that's good or bad, but it's good in some ways. That means they're, they're serving the public. So I want to share that.
Mr. Glover?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several months ago, back in November, I believe, this, this body approved the St. Helena Cultural Overlay District Committee to look at the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and to move forward with any suggestion or recommendation. And on that list, I had submitted, we submitted nine names. One of the names, Robert Simler, doesn't live on St. Helena anymore. He lives on Ladies Island. And so he has sent a letter of resignation in. And I want to submit a name who lives on St. Helena by the name of Laura Lee Rose to replace him.
Okay.
Laura Lee used to, she retired from Clemson Extension Service. And she's been very active with the Master Gardener. But she's, she's a, yeah, she's lived on St. Helena for several years. So I don't know how to move that forward.
I believe, Mr. Kebney?
Yeah, I'm not sure how that, do we, is it, have those votes to select?
Weren't they an ad hoc?
We'll look into it.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll find out exactly if it's ad hoc committee. I can do that. If it's something else that we have to have a full council vote on that, we will take care of that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Any other reports before we move on?
I just have one, Mr. Chairman, from the Economic Development Corporation. They're going to be increasing the dues this year for the members from municipalities. They will not be increasing the dues for the county because of the sizable contribution that we make to their annual budget. They're also seeking information from the county on who will be nominated to be a member of their board because there is some consideration that that board member would also then serve on the board of the South Carolina Alliance. So they'll be standing by for input from us. I told us those nominations would probably go to the Finance Committee at their next meeting and probably be available by the end of this month, uh, the end of next month.
Okay. One, any other comments? Okay, before we move to the consent agenda, I, I know that several council members, if not all of us, have received numerous emails regarding the land swap that was being proposed. We went on a tour of those lands. There was a recommendation of swapping certain properties. That went to rural and critical lands, Rural Critical Lands Board said they did not want to pursue that particular swap. It is not on the agenda for any kind of action by council because we are still in the, not negotiations, but taking a look at the properties to see what can be accomplished with rural and critical lands regarding those particular properties. So when that comes up again, the public will have adequate notice of when, when we're going to take action, if any. Okay, we are now at the consent agenda. I would like a motion for the approval of the consent agenda. Mr. Lawson makes the motion.
I'll second that.
Ms. Brown makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. I do not see any objections.
Can we just have a moment for discussion? Mr. Hamburger still here?
Yes.
Yeah. We're not going to be able to take any action tonight with regard to the suggestion you made, but that will go back to the committee before the third reading for consideration.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I do not see any objection. Therefore, the consent agenda is approved. We're now at item number 12, which is the first reading of an ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, we, we just need to make sure that council understands procedurally that when y'all gave it the second reading, unless you all, for Mullet Street, unless you all instruct staff to take it back to committee through a vote, we're not taking it back to committee. It'll be on for third reading. So, and, and just for, just for, just for clarification, county administration would not support such a condition being placed on the property because we're not sure what we're going to recommend to you at a future date, what we do with the existing house. So just want to make it clear that it will, it will come back to you all for third reading if you vote for second reading on, on consent agenda.
Gotcha. Okay. Back to number 12, first reading of an ordinance to amend the Southern Low Country Design Manual to Meet the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, also known as MS4, permit requirements. Motion and second, please?
No move.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson makes the motion. Ms. Howard makes the second. Any questions? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection and I see no objections. 13 is a first reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code, Section 5-11-90-D, penalty for clear-cutting prior to development. May I have such a motion, please?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the motion, second.
Second.
Mr. Reitz makes the second, duly motioned and second. Any questions?
Actually, do have two questions regarding the specific, specific language in there. In 51190D1, it says may be applied. Specifically, does that give staff the ability to apply the punishment on a subjective basis? Or is that a shall apply type situation?
Okay, that's a fair question. Who would be the person to best answer? Mr. Bartholmio.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Merchant?
Yes. So the, I'm sorry, I missed the, this is in, on the one-year deferral?
Yeah, the one-year deferral. It says, give me one second. Sorry, my phone's ringing. Trying to find it. It's in the new language, but it says essentially, I think it's page 25.
Okay, yeah, I see it.
Yes, page 25. It says may, may be applied.
Yes. I can go back for clarification, but from my understanding, the one-year deferral is for forestry that's following forestry management. You know, it's, it's meant to distinguish actual silviculture from somebody simply just clear-cutting a property. But I'll get some clarification for a second reading. But I think that that, I'm not exactly sure why it's a may and not a shall, but I'll, I'll get some clarification on that.
And then last question I had about that, I do see that the, the language is being taken out. There was an appeal process and the new language does not have anything for an appeal process. Is that going to be encapsulated in another section? Or is there going to be an appeal process to, to any of this?
Well, I think in any staff decision, there is an appeal process to the ZBOA. So that's an option available, you know, to, to anyone.
Okay.
As far as our interpretation of each of these sections.
That, that's all the questions I have.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have a question? And this will be approved without objection. Is there any objection? Seeing none, it is approved. And we're now on to item 14, which is, excuse me, first reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code, Appendix C dot two, Robert Smalls Parkway, South Carolina 170, to update access management standards. A motion, please?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion. Second, please.
I'll second it.
Ms. Tabernick makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any questions? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection. Item 15 is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance and sale of limited general obligation bonds for the Bluffton Township Fire District Series 2023A or such other appropriate series designation of Beaufort County, South Carolina, in the principal amount not to exceed $4,250,000. Fixing the form and details of the bonds, authoring, authorizing the county administrator or his lawfully authorized designee to determine certain matters relating to the bonds, providing for the payment of the bonds, and disposition of the proceeds thereof and other matters related thereto. A motion, please?
Make that motion.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Glover makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any questions?
Let me just, this is, this is actually money that is being used to purchase equipment for the Bluffton Fire Department, which is then backed up by a millage for the Bluffton area. It does not affect Hilton Head, Port Royal, or anyplace else. This is just strictly for the Bluffton Fire District.
Yes. And that was explained at the, at the committee meeting.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection and I see no objections. Item number 16, first reading of an ordinance to appropriate funds from the state 2% accommodations tax and other matters related thereto, which is a fiscal impact from the fund balance and current year revenues in Fund 2000, which is the state A tax fund. Now, this evening, you should have received in your packet from the chair, Mr. Farmer, the complete list of monies that are being sought and an explanation of what they're, could be used for. It is our obligation to take a look at this and we have one of three options this evening. First, to do first reading without objection, just as it is, and move it to second reading. Option two is to detail questions or concerns that we have within here that may need to be answered by the state tax board. Or number three, council has the ability, under its authority, to make changes to this listing as we see fit.
No move for approval for this reading.
I'll second that.
Mr. Glover makes the motion. And Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I have, oh, go ahead. Your chairman.
No, you're next first. You're good.
One of the entities on here had certain restrictions put on it last year. And I don't know the status of that. We were to only reimburse after, after being given the receipts.
Correct.
That was my question.
Yes. And I can either have Mr. Williams come up or relate what Mr. Williams said to me, which was the question that was asked on behalf of council, was there was $32,000 awarded last year to the entity with the restriction that that $32,000 would only be paid if they submitted qualified invoices for what the money was going to be used for. And Mr. Williams, what was the final answer? Or do you want me to just say, so I can save you walking up here?
I'll share the microphone, but I won't go up and microphone anyway.
Because we may have more questions for you.
They, they did not give us receipts for the $32,000 for state accommodation tax. They did give us receipts for the $50,000 for the local accommodations tax. We did reimburse them. The $32,000 for the state was not reimbursed.
Okay. Everybody understands the $32,000 that was awarded last year and is being asked for again, no money was spent for that.
So we did pay it out, though? It was paid out?
No.
No, awarded.
Not for the state accom, there, there are two different accommodations taxes. There's the state accommodations tax and there's the local accommodations tax. Local accommodations tax automatically gives them $50,000 by ordinance. It's in the ordinance. It's an allocation, $150,000 for the CVB, $150,000 for the Hilton Head, Bluffton, and then $50,000 for the Black Chamber. But anyways, that, that, that was paid. He gave receipts for that. He actually had us pay some expenses. He gave us AP that he paid there. He did not give us any receipts for the $32,000 for the state and we did not pay it.
Okay.
Pretty awesome.
If I remember correctly, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
We had a pretty tight vote on this. I think we were actually, was it at the library in St. Helena we had this vote, I remember, about should we move forward with funding at all or not with this group until the issues are resolved? As far as I know, none of the issues have been resolved. We haven't had any update whatsoever. We put the restrictions on it, which if I think, I think it went 6-4 because one person was absent, and it passed. So if it wasn't awarded last time, and we're still in the same situation, I almost think we need to have that question again. Is this something we move forward to? Has this issue been resolved? What is the outcome of this? Because this is about a year ago. And we still don't have any answers. But yet we're going to continue to pay out possibly $84,000.
Yeah, we, we did speak with someone this week and we did confirm that the, the review of the matters that were in question is still ongoing by the appropriate authorities.
If we move this forward, is it going to maintain the same restrictions that we had in place prior from the last?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It would, it would be our recommendation, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Lawson, you were next.
Yes. And obviously, this came out of finance and we received the information and had a chance then to review what was given to us. And Mr. Farmer and his group do an incredible job every year in, in what they do. However, this is the first year we've seen them actually award money above and beyond what was, was asked for. I would almost, I guess I'm framing this in a way of a, making a, a, a amendment, but ask them to go back. They funded the Port Royal CVB by $100,000 additional. They also funded the Low Country and Resort Island Tourism Commission by $34,000. It's more than what they asked for. I would ask them to go back and there were some other very good organizations, I think, that, that deserve some money as well, to take that money and come back to us and use that to, to go to some other entities. And the first one that I would think of is, reading the information that was given to us, is that this money can be used for public facilities such as restrooms, dressing rooms, parks, and parking lots. And with that, I know that the, looking through the applications, that the Okati River Park construction was also thrown in there. And I, and I'd like to see us use some of that money for that or, or ask them to look at considering that. So I guess I'm, I'm making a, a amendment, a motion at this time to take the excess monies that they have applied to those organizations, go back and reallocate to other organizations that did not receive money.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have an amendment on the floor duly motioned and seconded to take the excess monies that they have applied to those organizations, go back and reallocate to other organizations to take the excess money that has been awarded above and beyond what was asked for in the awards. Take that money and ask the State Tax Board to reallocate that funds to other entities within there that weren't given consideration this time around. Is that a fair statement of what you're saying? Mr. Kevin?
Well, if that's a motion to amend, it's a pretty complicated motion to amend. It would seem to me that maybe the better route to go would be a motion to postpone consideration tonight to another point in time, to refer the matter back to the Finance Committee, to then refer it back to the A tax committee and then have them come forward with a new recommendation. And that's what I would recommend you do, is a motion to postpone.
No, we are not under time constraints.
There's no time constraint, no. And oftentimes, we bring forward, just happenstance, that the two percent state A tax recommendations come forward pretty much simultaneously with the local three percent, which will be coming forward probably in the next month or so.
Okay, so going back, would you then take back your first and your second and restate it, as he said, which would be a motion to postpone this first reading, send it back to the Finance Committee for reconsideration by the State Board?
Yes, will you repeat that or I'm good with what you just said?
I'm good with what I just said and it's on tape, so would you second that?
I will keep my second.
All right, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion about the motion?
Can we discuss on a postponement?
Yes, that's where we are now. Mr. Glover?
Yeah, thank you. If I remember, and I may be off a little, but at the Finance Committee, Mr. Farmer did say that they are funding all twenty-four applicants. That's what I was told, that every applicant that was qualified received funding. So I'm not too sure where the chairman is looking for right now and are the applicants receiving funding for this committee to go back and reconsider. That's what I was told when he was at that meeting. I may have misunderstood what he said, but he said there were only twenty-four applicants and all twenty-four received funding.
If that's a question to me, actually, there were more than just the twenty-four. They deemed that there were twenty-four that were qualified. So there's a difference between what applicants and then what they consider to be qualified applicants, such as, and I mentioned the
Yeah, you don't have to go into names and stuff.
Okati River Park, which their application was completely filled out, was correct, but they just deemed them not qualified, even though it's qualified under state regulations where the money can be spent. Does that make sense?
I understand. I understand what you're saying, yeah, okay.
Who else had a question?
I don't have a question, but I want to support what Mark said because there were several on here that didn't get what they asked for and a couple that got, I mean, the one got a hundred thousand dollars more. And so we probably should have them look at a more equitable distribution and one got nothing. So there were twenty-four, twenty-three got awards, some were not even what they asked for and so I would support the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and second on the floor. Is there anyone who would object to this or?
I do.
Okay.
Right.
Would you call the roll, please?
Yeah, let me just state why I'm objecting. I think we can move this forward on first reading and do any amendments on the second reading, but that's why I'm objecting to it.
Okay. That was my original motion, but obviously it was determined that it was too complicated to do that.
Yeah, and I don't think you're going to, you're not going to be able to get the work done to look into the submissions, the applications and the process by just doing it that way.
Right.
Is this only dealing with those matters where there was an overcompensation paid in the line of the Chair? Or are all the matters we discussed going to be readdressed at that meeting?
All matters are going to be readdressed. We've just made a recommendation. I think at this point, we haven't, we have not said this is what we want you to do, so we're asking them to go look at it again. So I think you're right.
Would you call?
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Tabernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
No.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Vice Chair McGowan?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
The motion passes ten-one.
Okay, we move on to item number seventeen. Item number seventeen is a public hearing, an approval of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a lease agreement with Beaufort Elite Volleyball Club for a portion of the real property located at twenty-seven twenty-seven Depot Road. May I have a motion?
How about that motion?
Ms. Howard makes the motion. A second, please.
I'll second that.
Mr. Reitz makes the second. I'm going to go to the public. Is there any member of the public wishes to offer an opinion on this particular item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any member of council want to talk about this?
I do.
Mr. Dawson?
Yeah, us moving forward with the Elite Volleyball Club allowing them to utilize this facility for their practices and things of that nature, I think is prudent. But I have a concern that we have other sport entities out there, particularly baseball groups, that have a need to utilize some of our facilities and I feel that we should, at some point, give consideration to allowing them or incorporating them into using some of our facilities, even if it is at a cost. And I know, I know a lot of our baseball fields are used for tournaments and things of that nature. But just as we accommodated this volleyball club, we should open ourselves to be amenable to assist and accommodate those other clubs as well.
And I believe that's going to happen as a result of what we do here. The word will get out. Right?
May I? All right, thank you. So we do rent out ball fields and different things as they are available. Here's the issue we run into. Everybody plays baseball at the same time. Everybody plays soccer at the same time. Travel ball, our ball, all these ball teams, they all play in the same season at the same time. So Parks and Rec, our programs are growing very rapidly. And the issue that we run into is the availability of the limited resources that we have. So it's not that we don't, it's just that we fill ours first and then rent what's available because everybody does it one time. And that's why there's just not enough to go around for everybody all the time. We just don't have that many fields. But they are available as we have the resources available to rent them out. I hope that's helpful.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, just a question. I mean, I think this is a great thing. I think that we're being smart with some of our resources. If there is another group, obviously, I think I heard Mr. Greenway say that this is not a Parks and Rec program, so they would come to who? For anyone that want to make a, so it would go to administration then for anyone else. And again, this volleyball lease is only for certain nights of the week for certain hours. So it's not like they've got the whole facility all weekend or every day. So again, I mean, there's other holes to fill that you could work out. And again, I think this is the first step. We'll figure out what's right and what's wrong and then be able to improve it and include more people as we move forward.
That's correct, and they should deal with the administration because this is not a Parks and Rec building. It's was spare space that we had become available as a result of being able to use other buildings for storage in that facility. But if there are other groups that can utilize that space, we'll be glad to talk to them and enter into a lease with them as well. I am a big proponent of working with travel ball clubs as much as we possibly can or other entities that need to use our rec facilities. So I have been working with Chuck and Shannon on that for many, many months and will continue to do so. So you all have my full commitment to continue that endeavor to be flexible with regards to those facility uses of our Parks and Rec facilities whenever we can.
Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm actually kind of glad this came up when it did, especially because we just removed an item off the agenda that was designed, if it was to move forward, to alleviate some of the pressure on our ball fields, especially baseball. Ms. Locar is actually in the audience. Do you have any of those numbers on you for enrollment to just show what we're at and how much we're growing and how much we need more ball fields? So we can accommodate the travel teams, the adult leagues, because it is more than just kids. I mean, and the ones that are really paying the taxes to fund these are the adults. So just curious to see how.
I can tell you, so we offer like adult softball three times a year. We have it spring, fall in Bluffton and summer in Beaufort. Those numbers have grown, every year they grow in the adult softball. We're at over thirty-five teams alone. And then this past year, we also added senior softball, where we're up to six teams in that. And that's for the adults in our baseball. We're looking at probably south of the Broad at some point having to cap the registration with those because we don't have the fields. The numbers just, they don't stop. I'll give you a prime example is in our youth basketball this year. In Beaufort, we increased by two or three teams. In Bluffton, we increased by twenty-five teams. So our numbers just don't stop. And I guess just because it's my passion and the fact that, you know, I'm all about recreation, I don't want to cap the numbers if at all possible. We do have some of the parents that just recently came and asked me when we would start capping the numbers. And I kind of feel like it's almost like our schools where they're at capacity too, but we don't stop kids from going to school. So even though we're at capacity with a lot of our sports, we don't want to stop them from getting and playing sports and staying out of trouble, you know? So we are growing. I mean, we just haven't stopped.
I would too encourage council that if you know of specific situations that need to be addressed for your constituents, groups, have them get in touch with county administration. There may not be a recreation facility available, just like this was not a recreation facility for them to practice volleyball in. But as the county administrator, and I'm going to take a little credit here, I was able to figure it out for this group that had approached me several months ago about finding them a space that they could rent because of their difficulty that they were experiencing with operating their volleyball program. So please feel free to tell those folks to reach out to me directly and I'll sit down with them and I'll see what solutions we have available and see if we can come up with something. So please, just know that.
And to close it off for my comments, if I may, Mr. Chairman, this is a good problem for us to have. We're growing north abroad and south abroad, but it's our job to make sure that we can continue to provide the proper services for this. I mean, live, work, and play. That's our motto. That's what we push for. Every single time we close out this meeting, you talk about it, Mr. Chairman, and that's why, you know, I'm pushing for, you know, that land acquisition. And Mr. Dawson is going to continue to push for the renovations in his area like he has every meeting that these comes up until it drives everybody else crazy until he gets something moved. That's our job. I know you do a great job trying to juggle it all. I know it's a lot of people. Thought I saw the last numbers for baseball was over six hundred in some of Bluffton.
It is.
Yeah.
And I will reiterate and say, we do, we do rent the fields when they're available, as Chuck said. You know, it's hard with us with, you know, being able to use the schools and stuff because all of the seasons run together. But we do rent to anyone that we can if they are available. Like right now, during basketball season, we do have a lot of the travel ball that are renting the facilities because we haven't started our season. So we do try to work with them and we rent them on Sundays when we don't have sports. So we do try to rent to them, but we also work with the school district and we provide a lot of the fields for them because a lot of their middle schools don't have facilities. We work with Holy Trinity. We work with Bridges. So we do work with a lot of different organizations in trying to provide the fields for them.
Well, to Eric's point and to Shannon's point and even to the council's point, we just, we realize that we have an issue. We just addressed the issue. So now we're going to, we're going to give credence to the county administrator to now have him look into this and try to solve this problem. It's a problem not only just for my district and the north end of the county, but the southern end of the county as well, so.
Thank you, Shannon.
Okay, any other comments before we vote? Yes?
You know, I'm glad Mr. Greenway made this point. I am very concerned about renting at this time because there are recreational needs and I support this, I will support this endeavor, but don't want to have us considering that the only way we can provide recreational opportunities is when someone come up to rent. That's going to put my district in a very difficult position as far as recreational needs. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? This will be approved without objection. Are there any objections? Seeing none, item seventeen is approved. Item number eighteen, approval of a resolution to include the Okati Regional Preserve in the Old Growth Forest Network Private Forest Registry and enter into a memorandum of agreement for the property to remain perpetually unlogged.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be more than happy to offer that as a motion.
And I'd like to second that, yeah.
Mr. Reitz? Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? This will be approved without objection and I see no objections. Okay, the business is done. We're at the second citizens' comments. We have three individuals who want to talk to us about items that are not on the agenda. The first one is Mr. Robert New. Mr. New?
Good evening. First, let me thank you for your public service. I know it's a lot of hours away from your family. Our house is over on St. Helena and it's down Sam Doyle Drive. If you don't know who Sam Doyle is, definitely look him up. People on St. Helena and well beyond now feel betrayed by county council, broken promises. A text amendment to the CPO was presented to the planning commission that it would effectively allow any large developer to create a gated community with an eighteen-hole golf course on the island. There is deep, genuine anger. The rationale for this proposed change was baffling. It was argued that the existing language in place for more than two decades was vague and that the county would be sued. Humorously, it was stated that the sudden appearance of this text amendment after all these years had nothing to do with Pine Island proposed development. Amazing. Of course, it had everything to do with Pine Island. The existing CPO is very clear: no gated community. Attorneys with decades of experience in this area of the law are stating emphatically the CPO will be upheld by the courts. Additionally, any first-year law student knows very well that the courts look to intent when there is any alleged vagueness in the language. It is abundantly clear the intent of the CPO created in nineteen ninety-nine was to stop a development exactly like this one. What was not conveniently mentioned was the reality, if the text amendment is jammed through, there will be substantial litigation from the other side, from your own constituents and local organizations. If the developers exercise the option to buy, there will be absolute certainty, significant litigation for years. Move folks on the island, black and white, live in modest homes and trailers. Many are farmers and they're fishermen and they're small business owners. They need you to represent them, not the developer. They need you to represent them, not the developer. There's a place for gated communities and golf courses, but not on this very sacred special land. St. Helena is called God's country and you don't want to mess with him. I ask you to join our governor and virtually all of our elected officials in stopping this destruction of a culture and a way of life that has existed for seven generations. Given the extreme fervor building around this issue, I humbly make two requests. This text amendment was put up on the agenda administratively and it can be removed from the consideration administratively. Simply requires a directive to staff. Send the message now to the entire community that the county stands firm in protecting St. Helena Island. Pull the text amendment now. Second, let the people of St. Helena and all of Beaufort County know that should the pieces of the puzzle fall in place, given the recent citizens' vote, the acquisition of Pine Island by the county will have top consideration in the coming months.
Thank you for your consideration. Paula Smith.
She left.
She left? He'll be last.
Skip Hoagland, Windmill Harbor. You're in violation of A-Tax FOIA. I have questions today that anyone can understand regardless of if you are honest, educated, or corrupted. Mr. Passment, why do you have to be an educated for four years plus keep illegally voting to approve the misuse of millions of tax funds by the Hilton Head Bluffton Chamber, the Beaufort Chamber C V B, and the Beaufort Black Chamber? Why segregate? We need to end the color of your skin and focus purely on the character of the man and the woman. Mr. Passment, you allow illegal chamber A-Tax funding with zero oversight, no DMO chamber contract spelling out legal use and reporting, no accounting, violation of A-Tax laws, procurement laws, and South Carolina Nonprofit Corporation Act laws, and add federal violation to IRS five oh one dash C six nonprofit tax codes and IRS Ubit laws. You also allow illegal use of funds by dishonest management managers Orlando Greenway and Gruber who use illegal tax funds to join the chambers as a town and county member. This is a quid pro quo. You also allow over one million A-Tax funds be taken to Canada, out of our country, by the Hilton Head Bluffton Chamber to develop a DMO website that has caused unfair trade and competitive practices by selling illegal advertising against local for-profit media, including our own newspapers. Also, why fund millions in A-Tax funds to private chambers, C V Bs, and DMOs when tourism, Facebook, et cetera, it's all done by free, by the technology, the local search, the social media? Mr. Passment, if anybody doesn't understand this, they're not qualified for public service. This illegal funding to all nonprofits must end, not just the chambers, but all of them. This is not a game of Monopoly and funny money. I ask for, as a member for accounting from the Beaufort Chamber C V B several years back under the South Carolina Nonprofit Corporation laws and was kicked out of the Beaufort Chambers, a troublemaker by lawyer Jim Wegman, Blakely Williams, and Ed Dukes, Judge Duke's brother. Also, three Beaufort County Council members, Covert, Fullillen, and Herbichon were refused access to the Nonprofit Act by Bill Miles and the Hilton Head Chamber for all their records and with a fraudulent line response and he claimed it was his secret sauce. It was none of your business. Mr. Passment, council, do you agree to fix this multi-million dollar, thirty-five-years nonprofit tax scam and fraud to all of us? Yes or no? Management, managers Gruber, Orlando Greenway, they all need to be investigated and forensically audited. No one in this council has seen the fraudulent budgets and audits they hand us. They only show us the numbers that them and the lawyers want us to see. It's all internally produced. Only a forensic audit identifies fraud, waste, crimes. A hired cookie cutter internal audit is designed to show nothing, only what the insiders want you to see. Your honest public service is very, and great, very much and greatly appreciated, but not your dishonest service. And this is why Rodman and Somerville are no longer with us because they got voted out. I ask you all to do your job, be honest, be transparent, be accountable, and force performance metrics, proven performance metrics, and stop all this happy horse manure. Stop it. Thank you.
Sir, you came late and want to speak?
Yes, I have a question.
State your name, please.
My name is Frank Ferulie. I've been here a little over ten years. I was a college professor in New Jersey. My father was a zoning enforcement officer and a fire chief for government installation. One of the things that amazed me and still does when I'm down here is these, the burning laws or lack of them. You wouldn't have, you can't, you haven't been allowed to do that, burn in your yard in probably sixty years in New Jersey and other developed areas. And when I do see people doing this, I would say a hundred percent, almost a hundred percent of them aren't observing the laws. So I'm wondering if that has become a consideration with the council, not just because of the pollution of it, but because of the danger of it, people not observing the law? And the fact that it's in other developed areas, it just hasn't been allowed for decades. So I was wondering if that's ever considered by you people and if it's ever been, you know, thought of or, you know. Because I've talked to some firemen as well, they think it's ridiculous as well, so that's about it.
Thank you for your comments.
I didn't get his name nor his location.
Michelle.
Michelle.
Okay, no further action to come before county council. This meeting is adjourned.